Good evening. Today is Monday, January 14th, 2019. Welcome to the Cabarrus County Board of Education Business Meeting and the Public Hearing on Policy 9125, Participation by Women and Minority-Owned Businesses. I'll call the meeting to order. Please rise for the opening ceremony and the presentation of colors.
Forward, march. Forward, arms. Right face. Forward, march.
Presenting tonight's colors were members of the Cabarrus County Air Force JROTC. Representing Mount Pleasant High School, Cadet Major Eric Lozano. Representing Robinson High School, Cadet Captain Scott Johnson. Representing Central Cabarrus, Cadet Second Lieutenant Kevin Robles. Representing Northwest Cabarrus, Senior Airmen Hunter Belina. And representing Robinson High School, Cadet Captain Jimena Diaz. Honoring America tonight with the playing of our National Anthem, were members of the Mount Pleasant Middle School Eighth Grade Band. Their names are as follows: Dylan Allmond, Mary MacBurrus, Jacob Chase, Angel Fisher, Ainsley Garcia, Caleb Gore, Landon Griffin, Trey Hall, Adriana Monaco, Zach Norman, Madison Paugh, Carmen Ryan, Alicia Ruiz Picasso, Sidney Warren, and Timothy Wilson. Thank you.[275.63][275.63](APPLAUSE). The Director of the Mount Pleasant Middle School Band is Mr. Keith Grush.
Thank you all for being here. We always enjoy having the students come, whether to present the colors or to sing the Star-Spangled Banner, in this case, play it. So, thank you. Board Members, I'll take a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
Somebody second.
Mr. Harrison made the motion. Mr. Walter made the second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, passes seven zero. We'll begin, as we normally do at our business meeting, with recognitions. Welcome Mrs. Glenda Jones for the Teacher Leader Cohorts.
All right. Good evening, Board. According to John Quincy Adams, "If your actions inspire others to dream more, learn more, do more, and become more, you are a leader." During the fall of 2012, several CCS district leaders envisioned a program to extend the learning of teachers and allow the exploration of leadership options while still remaining in the school building. The group before you this evening is the fifth cohort of the Cabarrus County Schools' Teacher Leaders Program. This group met for the first time in January of 2017 with a total of 38 teachers who accepted the challenge. Tonight, we end with 29 graduates. In addition to these pursuits, all teacher leaders also collaborated with the principals to develop and take on leadership roles within their schools. Therefore, within this group, we have lead teachers, coaches, technology facilitators, lead mentors, and mentors. Our goal for this program was to provide these teachers, who were already outstanding in the classroom, professional development to help extend their skills to increase the capacity for leadership in their school and in the school district. These teacher leaders now use their enhanced skills to have challenging conversations, make strategic and sound decisions, build leadership capacity in others, understand and explain essential components of effective instructional and engagement practices, and teach their adult colleagues differently than they teach their students. One participant in this cohort said, "This program has allowed me to learn different theories and strategies to use both in the classroom and in leadership roles." Another said, "It has made me feel valued as an educator that the district provided me with a leadership opportunity." It is evident, these teacher leaders now have the knowledge and leadership skills to extend their influence within and beyond their classroom. At this time, I'd like to thank all of our teacher leaders for their hard work, and I'm going to ask our teacher leaders to stand as a group to be recognized. But please stand.
We again want to congratulate them on completing the Cabarrus County Schools Teacher Leadership Cohort, and we know there are great things in the future for you. I shared with many of them upstairs as I walked around from our first original cohort. We have 12 administrators currently within our county serving as assistant principals. The second cohort, we have 10. So, as attrition occurs and opportunities arise, that was the, you know, and not just as an administrator, but as district lead teacher, STEM coaches, and those types of opportunities. So, again, thank you, and I'm going to allow them to actually leave, because I know you had an opportunity to come up and visit with them in the reception. And then our very own Kate Colberth is going to join us back up on the board. So, thank you again.[525.54][525.54](APPLAUSE).
Thank you all for taking the extra time out of your schedules to engage in the leadership cohort. Next, we will have the Hilbush Ford Teacher of the Month.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Board Members. Mr. Vaughn is not with us this evening, but as always, we want to thank him and Hilbush Ford for their generosity, which allows us to recognize outstanding teachers in our district. Tonight, I am pleased to introduce to you our Hilbush Ford Teacher of the Month for January, Shakia Stokes. Ms. Stokes, would you, your family, and any members of your school's administrative team who are here tonight, please come forward. Ms. Stokes is a first grade teacher at Pitt School Road Elementary School. She was nominated for this award by several parents who wrote about her commitment and dedication to her students. Here are a few excerpts from their nominations. "Ms. Stokes is an amazing teacher. She has worked so well with my son, who sometimes struggles with ADHD. She has exhibited great patience, has given me updates each day, and has praised him when he does well. My son's reading and writing have significantly improved under her teaching and from us using tips and techniques that she suggested." Another nomination stated, "I am nominating Ms. Stokes because of her commitment to education. She attends all the after-school events and ensures that parents have the resources they need to keep kids learning over the weekend and on inclement weather days. She makes herself available to parents after hours and on weekends." And finally, another said, "I have custody of my granddaughter. She had a rough kindergarten experience at another school and started first grade way behind grade level. Ms. Stokes met with me right away and implemented a plan. I am happy and excited to report that my granddaughter has reached levels far beyond what we expected. She's grown an entire reading level in the first nine weeks of school." This nomination is to recognize the woman who took this precious child under her wing and looks as though she will be the one to help her take flight in a brand-new direction. Ms. Stokes, thank you for your commitment to your student's success and to being a resource to their parents. Congratulations on your selection as the Hilbush Ford Teacher of the Month. And please allow Dr. Lauder to present you with your award, and then allow our Board Members to congratulate you.[723.75][723.75](APPLAUSE).
Now, if you'll both go through here and let them congratulate you.
Now, I would like to ask Kate Colberth--oh, I'm sorry, I didn't recognize Madam Chair. I'm just up here celebrating right on. If you'd love me to go ahead with the next one.
I don't have that on my agenda.
Oh, the regional, never mind. I jumped ahead, sorry. Sorry. I was thinking you were finished already. Go ahead.
I have one more. All right. So, I would like to ask Kate Colberth to come down and join the superintendent, please. Kate Colberth, the 2018-19 Cabarrus County Schools Teacher of the Year, has been selected as the 2019 Southwest Region Teacher of the Year. Kate was surprised by the announcement from Free Bird McKinney, the 2018 North Carolina Teacher of the Year, on Friday, December the 14th. Kate, among eight other regional winners, will now participate in the state selection process. The North Carolina Teacher of the Year will be named in April. Congratulations, Kate.
And now you may go through and let the board shake your hand. Now, back to the right spot on the agenda. Next, we'll welcome Mr. Basilese to recognize the School Nurse Administrator of the Year.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the Board. Tonight, it is my great honor and privilege to present to you Ms. Kim Reagan, Cabarrus Health Alliance's Director of School Engagement. Ms. Reagan was recently awarded the North Carolina School Nurse Administrator of the Year Award through the North Carolina School Nurse Association. Chief among her responsibilities is the oversight of the school nurse program, but Ms. Reagan is involved in multiple other programs that positively impact our community's students and families. Ms. Reagan brings 24 years of nursing experience, including 14 years as a school nurse supervisor. She is a caring professional whose methodical and scientific approach to her work brings a sense of reassurance and calm to those who are experiencing health challenges and concerns. Ms. Reagan's colleagues and peers describe her as a strong leader. She has a clear vision of school and community health. Though she is a natural-born collaborator, she remains a tireless advocate for her profession and her people. Please join me in celebrating this major accomplishment for Kim Reagan, North Carolina School Health Administrator of the Year.
And we'll go on to Agenda Item 4.05 for the Impact Through Education Awards, and welcome Mrs. Ronnie Boone.
Good evening. Tonight, we will present Impact Through Education Awards to students and staff at R. Brown McAllister STEM Elementary School and the Opportunity School. The Impact Awards are sponsored by AXA Advisors, and at this time, I'd like to invite Mr. Leo Spardella and Mr. Adrian Caspar to please join me at the front of the room for the presentations. Gentlemen, thank you for your sponsorship of these awards. We appreciate your generosity and willingness to help us to recognize our students and staff in this way. We'll begin our recognitions tonight with R. Brown McAllister STEM Elementary School. May I have any administrative team members from R. Brown to please join us at the front of the room? Our first honoree from R. Brown McAllister STEM Elementary this evening is Michaela Williams. Would Michaela and her family please come forward? Michaela is a servant leader at R. Brown McAllister. She is a positive role model and embraces each day with a great attitude and a smile. She is part of the Math and Science Olympiad teams and is also on the Safety Patrol. She's always willing to lend a helping hand, whether it's running an errand, cleaning up, or being a mentor to a younger student. As a fifth grader, she exudes confidence, helpfulness, and integrity. Her work ethic is exceptional. Outside of school, she is a toddler teacher at her church. One of Michaela's teachers had this to say about her. "Thank you, Michaela, for not only being a responsible student for your learning and growth, but also for being a student who shows great character day in and day out. Michaela is a true example of what being an R. Brown Bobcat is all about. Congratulations on receiving this Impact Through Education Award." Our next honoree from R. Brown McAllister STEM Elementary is Isabel York. Would Isabel and her family please come forward? Isabel York is a fifth-grade student who is a sweet, bright, shining star at R. Brown McAllister. Her compassion for helping classmates, dedication to excellence, and willingness to strive to better herself and those around her are like none other. Isabel is always smiling and can brighten any day. Her smile is contagious, as she is a morning broadcaster and a media assistant. Her positivity reaches anyone and everyone she works with. Outside of school, Isabel is busy playing the piano and dancing. One of her teachers said, "I feel lucky to know Isabel and to watch her grow. She is a treasure and shows our school what it means to be a Bobcat. We are thankful that Isabel is a part of the R. Brown community." Congratulations, Isabel, on receiving the Impact Through Education Award. Our next honoree from R. Brown McAllister STEM Elementary is Jenny Byrd. Would Ms. Byrd and her family please come forward? Jenny Byrd is the Guidance Counselor at R. Brown McAllister STEM Elementary School and has been in this role since 2010. She is a graduate of the University of North Carolina at Chapel Hill and received her Graduate Teaching Certificate in Special Education and her Master's Degree in Counseling from the University of North Carolina at Charlotte. She is also a recent licensed professional counselor associate. Mrs. Byrd's passion for her role as a school counselor is evident in everything that she does. She teaches K-5 guidance lessons monthly, runs small groups, meets individually with students, and is an integral part of the school's mental health team. She initiated implementing mindful McAllister kits in all classrooms and has co-taught mindful lessons with the majority of the teachers at the school. She co-led the grant application for a Jimmy Johnson Foundation Grant, which the school was recently awarded, titled Turning Trauma into Triumph. One of Jenny's colleagues had this to say about her. "Jenny does it all. She is a positive role model for our students. She is patient and willing to help students at any time. If a student needs her, she will drop what she is doing and take the time the student needs to listen and guide them on how to handle whatever it is. She supports our classrooms, and even in the most stressful and frustrating situations, she always has a smile on her face. Jenny's commitment to R. Brown McAllister students and staff is truly outstanding, and that's why she is the recipient of this Impact Through Education Award. Congratulations."[1452.01][1452.01](APPLAUSE). And our final honoree this evening from R. Brown McAllister STEM Elementary is Mr. Bob Morgan. Would Mr. Morgan and his family please come forward? Bob Morgan is a custodian at R. Brown McAllister STEM Elementary School and has been in this role since 2016. He studied Biology and Art at the University of North Carolina at Asheville. He worked for 15 years at a small video production company and was a substitute at Mary Frances Wall Center. Being married to a teacher and having two children in the school system, Bob has a deep appreciation and value for education. His commitment and dedication to R. Brown McAllister goes above and beyond cleaning the building. He has relationships with all of the staff and students throughout the building. You will often find him sharing his love of nature and science with both students and staff. One of his colleagues had this to say about him. "Bob is the kindest person you will ever meet. He is committed to our school, the staff, and students. He makes every effort and gives as much as he can, not only to get the work done, but also to get to know people and their interests. He is personable, helpful, prompt, reliable, hard-working, honest, and kind. What an added bonus that he models these qualities for our students." Another colleague said, "Mr. Bob is an amazing part of our school. He has a wonderful attitude and is always willing to help. He stops and takes time to explain nature and animals. I cannot tell you how much I have learned from him in addition to what he has taught my students. He is simply amazing. Bottom line, Bob is invested in the school and its people like him who helped to make R. Brown McAllister a great place to work and learn." Congratulations, Bob. Now, we'll move on to our recognitions for students and staff at the CCS Opportunity School. I'd like to invite any members of the Opportunity Schools' administrative team to come forward at this time. Our first honoree from the Opportunity School this evening is Joshua McIntosh. Would Josh and his family please come forward? Josh is a seventh grader at the Opportunity School. His teachers and other staff members describe him as respectful, kind, smart, and motivated. He makes excellent grades and is a role model at the school. He loves being outdoors and playing with his friends. His hobbies include roller skating, bike riding, and going to the movies. Josh's career goals are to become a veterinarian or a doctor and to join the Air Force. Congratulations, Josh, on receiving the Impact Through Education Award. Our next honoree from the Opportunity School is Luisa-- Our next honoree from the Opportunity School is Luisa De Vasconcelos. Did I say that right? Okay, thank you. Would Luisa and her family please come forward? Luisa, who goes by Zain, is an 11th grader. She is described as respectful, pleasant, and helpful to others at school, including her peers and her teachers. Zain was born in Brazil and moved to Concord when she was four years old. Her hobbies include playing the guitar, singing, and songwriting. She has also written many poems. She plans to attend Film Design School and pursue a career as a screenwriter and director. She's already getting a head start on her career goals at the Opportunity School. She designed a public service announcement about the dangers of human trafficking. She wrote the script as well as designed the video. Congratulations on your selection as an Impact Through Education Award winner. Our next honoree from the Opportunity School is Mrs. Mary Crawford. Would Mrs. Crawford and her family please come forward? Mary Crawford began her teaching career through the Lateral Entry Program and is now in her 10th year as a teacher. She also is a product of Cabarrus County Schools, graduating from Concord High School before earning a Bachelor's Degree in Polymer and Color Chemistry from North Carolina State University. Mrs. Crawford is a creative and hard-working teacher. Her lessons are unique and student-centered, and her students enjoy her nurturing classroom environment. She incorporates critical thinking and fun strategies into her daily lessons. She also demonstrates care and compassion for all of the students at the Opportunity School. The Opportunity School is proud to recognize Mrs. Crawford with an Impact Through Education Award. Congratulations. And our final honoree this evening from the Opportunity School is Mrs. Tomasha Simmons. Would Mrs. Simmons and her family please come forward? Tomasha Simmons is a teacher assistant at the Opportunity School. She has worked for Cabarrus County Schools for five years. Born and raised in Long Island, New York, Mrs. Simmons' passion for working with children began as a troop leader with her daughter's Girl Scout Troop. In addition to her work at the Opportunity School, Mrs. Simmons is an accomplished singer who has performed at the White House during the George H.W. Bush Administration. Her colleagues describe her as dedicated and dependable. They say she has high expectations for all of the students at the Opportunity School. Mrs. Simmons works hard to create an atmosphere that stirs up students' enthusiasm for learning and believes that every child has the ability to learn and must have teachers and adults in their lives who will meet them at their level of learning. Congratulations Mrs. Simmons on receiving this Impact Through Education Award. Okay, so we are ready to recognize the winners of the Holiday E-Card Contest? Yes. This year, more than 200 students entered designs in the 8th Annual Holiday E-Card Contest. Designs were selected in two categories, traditional and digital. The winning designs were used in Dr. Lauter's official holiday greeting to staff and the public, which we will show at the end of this presentation. Once again this year, we are thrilled to announce that each winner will receive a day pass to Great Wolf Lodge's water park, and those passes are good for four people each. So we want to give a special thanks to Great Wolf Lodge Manager Angie Brown and her team for providing our winners with these certificates. Tonight, it's my pleasure to introduce you to our winners. Students, when I call your names, please come forward so that Dr. Lauter can present you with your certificate and remain up front so that the board members can congratulate you all as a group. In the Traditional Design category, our elementary school winner was Thomas Eisenhower from Weddington Hills Elementary School. Our Middle School winner in the Traditional category is Megan Desmet from Hickory Ridge Middle School. Is Megan here? And our High School winner in the Traditional category is Emma Kostick from Cox Mill High School. In the Digital Design category, we had two winners. Our Middle School winner from this category is Mia Swatowski from Concord Middle School. And our High School winner from this category is Akile Shiva Ramakrishnan from Concord High School, and I know he is not here with us this evening. So congratulations to all of you. And if you'd let the board members congratulate each of you. You can play the video now. And Dr. Mary Beth Roth will come forward for the National Calendar artwork.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Dr. Lauter's School Board members. At this time, I'd like to ask Stephanie Lara and any administrator--
At this time, I'd like to ask Stephanie Lara, a student at Jane Freese, to come forward and her administrators who are here with her this evening. This evening, we are recognizing Stephanie for her artwork that is featured in the Multi-State Information Sharing and Analysis Center's Cybersecurity National Calendar. The theme of this year's calendar is "Do You Really Know Who You're Talking To Online?" Stephanie's work was selected for the month of January. So we'd like to congratulate her for her work, and we have it here. So I'm going to ask her to hold that up. Congratulations.
Well, board members, we are ready to go to the approval of minutes, Agenda Item 5.01. And I will share that I sent Ms. Abbott a few, I'll say just not really even grammar changes, just an "s" here, whatever, a few really minor things. Didn't change any content at all. Any questions about the board, the minutes? I'll take a motion to approve the minutes for the November 29th Board Orientation, which was a training session for all of us, the December 5th Work Session, and the December 17th Business Meeting. Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second? Mr. Walter made the motion, Ms. Grimsley made the second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so the minutes are approved, 7-0. We're next moving into the Reports area. And just from myself, I want to make sure the public understands and is aware that the public hearing on the realignment proposals will begin at approximately 7:00 PM on Monday, February 4th, after our Work Session. Our plan is to have our Work Session from about 6:00 to 7:00. We'll try to keep the agenda tight and then have the public hearing afterwards. So we're not holding everyone who might want to speak or hear the discussion on the Work Session agenda, and then we can focus on the public hearing. So Ms. Abbott will be publishing that in the newspaper for two weekends, right? To make people aware? And will we also, I guess we'll also have connect ads going out, right? Okay. So there should be hopefully enough advertisement about when that is for folks to know. And that's all I have this evening.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, I want to welcome everyone back to school and wish everyone a Happy New Year. I hope your winter break was enjoyable and relaxing. I want to announce that Cabarrus County Schools Financial Aid Night will be two weeks from tomorrow, Tuesday, January 29th, at Concord Middle School. The Financial Aid Night is a time to learn about the financial aid application process. High school parents and students are encouraged to attend. It will be a great opportunity to ask questions and start the college financial planning process. We will wrap up first semester this week. Our high school students began their first semester exams today. Parents, please take note that our traditional high schools will dismiss early this week. You can find the dismissal schedule and other important dates on the district website. On Thursday, January 17th of this week, we will hold a dedication ceremony for the New Performance Learning Center. The ceremony will begin at 6:00 PM at the new site, which is 4521 Weddington Road. Tours of the new building will be conducted following the ceremony. Congratulations once again to Kate Colberth on her selection as the 2019 Southwest Regional Teacher of the Year. She will now move on to compete in the state selection process for the North Carolina Teacher of the Year, along with eight other regional winners. We certainly look forward to crowning her the new North Carolina Teacher of the Year. Congratulations to Arja Day, who won the District Spelling Bee on January 9th. This is Arja's second Spelling Bee Championship. She was the top speller in our district last year, too. We wish her all the best as she represents us in the Regional Bee next month in Charlotte. Congratulations also in order to R. Brown McAllister STEM Elementary School on receiving a $39,000 Jimmy Johnson Foundation Champions Grant. Champion Grants are awarded annually to K-12 public and charter schools in select areas in California, Oklahoma, and North Carolina. Cabarrus County Schools has been selected as one of the four teams to participate in locally-sponsored NAF Future Ready Labs, which are a collaboration between National Academy Foundation, Business Partners, Academy, and District Representatives to offer students an internship experience with an innovative and comprehensive structure. The program provides high school students an opportunity to put their education into practice in a unique work environment with support from local business partners. Local businesses will partner with advisory boards to develop a strong local talent pipeline. This year, NAF will be piling its Future Ready Lab tools, resources, and supports with a select group of participants across the country. These four teams were selected through a rigorous application process to identify strong, goal-oriented school districts and advisory board teams to plan and implement meaningful internship programs for their communities and their high school students. Finally, I want to wish our school board members Happy School Board Appreciation Month. Cabarrus County Schools is grateful to our Board of Education members for their service to the students and to our system. Our board members are active, involve citizens who voluntarily give their personal time to support the school district, students, and staff. We appreciate your commitment and thank you for your dedication.
Thank you, Dr. Lauter. And some of you may have seen the post on the district's Facebook page today about school board appreciation. And I know some folks don't always understand what all we do. It's a lot more than just show up for two meetings a month. I think I talked to most of you-- well, I know I talk to everybody at least once this week, some twice or more. So we do have a lot of communication in between to try to understand, challenge each other with questions and ideas. And so I too appreciate all of you as my colleagues. Next, we will move to the public hearing. Now, just for, we do have one speaker signed up, but we will have two opportunities for speakers tonight. The first is for a public hearing for Policy 9125, Participation by Women and Minority-Owned Businesses. And then we will still have the regular public speaking opportunity that we have at every business meeting. So, board members, first I'll take a motion that the public hearing on Policy 9125 be open to public input.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Mr. Shoemaker made the motion, Mr. Harrison made the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that's 7-0. The public hearing is now open. We did not have anyone indicate they wanted to speak, but is there anyone here in the audience who wishes to speak to Policy 9125? Okay, hearing none. I'll take a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second that.
And Ms. Grimsley made the motion, Mr. Shoemaker made the second. All in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes 7-0. We will now move to the Guest Speakers section. In accordance with Board Policy 2310, a part of each business meeting will be set aside for citizens to address the board through public comment. Each speaker will receive three minutes to present comments. Sign-up will be available 30 minutes before the meeting begins, and they must sign up with a board clerk no later than the normal start time of the regularly scheduled monthly business meeting. business meeting. There's additional information in the agenda regarding the procedures. I have one speaker who signed up tonight, Karen Abraham, if you would like to come forward, and you would wish to speak to realignment. And there'll be three minutes on the clock. It will be when you're getting close, I think it's a 20 seconds.
Thank you to the board for the time that I'm able to speak with you here tonight. I am here to request that the board review the new middle school boundaries in the area of Pitt School Road from Highway 29 to the intersection of Pitt School Road and Roberta. I currently live in Planning Block 103, and my child will attend Winkler next year. After the new boundary is drawn and implemented, he will attend J. N. Fries, along with five other neighborhoods in the middle of Pitt School Road. Although I appreciate the time and work the committee dedicated to this process, I don't feel that any natural boundaries were considered, nor do I feel the committee considered the students and families in these neighborhoods. After attending some of the meetings, the committee used a set criteria, such as not splitting up roads and common sense lines to set boundaries in some instances, while that same criteria was ignored in others, including my neighborhood of Falcon Chase. The neighborhoods in the middle school and in the neighborhoods in the middle of Pitt School Road, we were just merely numbers. The road is not only segmented at each end, with Carolando and Savannah Commons on the area near Highway 29 attending Winkler, and Yates Minnow on the far end near Roberta Road attending Winkler. It is segmented down the middle of the road, with one side, including my neighborhood, attending Fries. Neighborhoods across the street from one another will go to two different middle schools. If the road had to be segmented, wouldn't it make more sense to use Pitt School Road Elementary, The Farm, or even another street as a boundary, with half of the road going towards Roberta and the other half going the other direction towards Highway 29? Or the best-case scenario, leaving the boundary at its current location of Roberta Road? Why does my son have to pass a neighborhood that will attend Winkler on a larger commute to Fries when he could stay at his current school? The neighborhood he will pass is actually closer to Fries in terms of mileage. Shouldn't the blocks closer to Roberta Road attend Fries, and the ones closer to Highway 29 attend Winkler? Time and safety become factors, which is also a priority for all. Why are we drawing new middle school boundaries when under this plan, for example, 11 students from Concord Middle and 44 students from Harris Road will attend Winkler? And the neighborhoods in the middle of Pitts, including mine, will go to another middle school? Wouldn't it be less of a disruption to leave those 11, to leave those 44, and to leave my planning block of 103, which encompasses 40 kids at Winkler? The numbers are similar, when the main purpose of the plan is to disrupt the least number of students and families as possible. Finally, and in conclusion, Cabarrus County's 10-year plan includes a new feeder school for Robinson. Most likely, the neighborhoods around the Pitt School Road area, including mine, will attend that school. So, the families that are affected in 2020 will be affected a short time later, and why would a choice be made? Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Okay, board members, we'll now go to the consent agenda. Agenda Item 9.01. You can see we have the budget amendments there from last week, the policies on the first reading, the policies on second reading, the approval of non-traditional school calendars, and the submission of our own training hours. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Mr. Harrison made the motion, Mr. Schumaker made the second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes 7-0. And we'll now go to the action agenda. Welcome Ms. Reimer and Mrs. Burns for Agenda Item 10.01, and as for the policy we just had the public hearing for, Policy 9125.
Yes, ma'am. And so, committee recommends as-is. We've had no communication from anyone concerning this policy, so...
Madam Chair, I had a quick question. And I apologize, I didn't even catch this till later this afternoon, but it just kind of bothered me, that I was thinking, and I just spoke to the board attorney prior to the meeting starting, that it should say minority-owned businesses. I would think that would be clarification for it had to be owned by a minority, and it wasn't just a minority business. That may be the correct verbiage, but I just wanted some clarification.
Yeah, just a second scratch out on the title?
Yeah.
I think you are correct.
And I did take a look at the statute, and I was actually surprised, the statute says minority businesses. Then it defines minority businesses as being owned. But I think it's more understandable if it says minority-owned businesses. I think I'm comfortable with that change, even though it's not necessarily required.
Yeah, the PLS updated that.
And that would be through the entire policy, not just in the title.
Well, it defines, yeah, in the top paragraph, it defines what a minority business is. So I think that's why they took the "owned" off of probably all of those pieces.
I just think it makes more sense, and it catches your eye, that it definitely needs to be a owner-minority business.
Board members, are you okay with that? Just add the "owned" back in? And we can still pass it tonight?
Okay.
Because the implication is there. Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, I'm still, I guess focused on just coming up with a 10%. Aren't we required to do more than just pick the 10%?
That's it.
What does the law tell us we're supposed to do?
The state has to go through a big disparity study. I was just reviewing the legal requirements, and for most local entities, it's not a requirement, but that there's some good faith reliance, and I think reliance on the state standard of 10% is probably close enough. I know as a fact, most local school boards do not do any type of a study. It's very expensive, it's hard to come up with a study. And I think the statutory intent is met, from my understanding of the authorities, is if you follow the state percentage and you have a public hearing, where if there's a reason to have a different number, or somebody has some information on different numbers, they can present that. I think you've met the legal standard, based on what we've done. And one more point, I would point out that it's only an aspirational goal in any event. It shows that the board is committed to seeking minority-owned applicants, but there cannot be any favoritism at the end of the day toward any minority-owned business.
But it's a state percentage.
It's a state percentage, that's right.
So it's not really our goal, it's the state's.
That's correct.
Okay, Dwight, any other comments? Mr. Schumaker?
I was going to make the motion that we...
Okay, so I can make a motion, too?
That we approve 9125 with the one noted change that we made to adding "owned" at the beginning in the title of the procedure or policy, excuse me.
Do you have a second?
Madam Chair, may I second the motion also, please?
Mr. Schumaker made the motion, Mr. Harrison seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Okay, that passes 7-0. We'll move to Agenda Item 10.02, the approval of 4345, Student Discipline Records on First Reading.
Yes, ma'am. This is just a few changes to format this policy a little bit, no changes to the policy itself, other than formatting.
Can I believe we put it on the action agendas, so board members could elect to vote for or against it?
I move to approve this on first read.
Okay, Mr. Walter made the motion. About a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Schumaker made the second. Any discussion?
I was the one that did ask to have this removed, and as most people know, and one of the reasons that I did ask for that, it refers to one of my favorite policies, which is student records, and I will not vote for this because of that. So I just wanted to let you know for the record.
That's your prerogative. And we expected that. Any further discussion about Policy 4345? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
No.
Okay. Motion carries with six votes for, and Ms. Carpenter dissenting. So, thank you. And we'll move to Agenda Item 10.03, the summer program.
Good evening, Dr. Lauter, Ms. Furtinbaugh, members of the board. We presented this information to you last week, and I have not received any questions, so asking you to approve this on this evening.
Any questions from the board?
Dr. Hill, can you just reiterate for us how many students this will serve? Do you have a projection of the number of students involved?
We have a rough estimate. It's very, very rough, based on the number of students that did not pass last year in those content areas. We think that we will have a much better projection around March of this year. Those are last year's numbers, so it's really difficult to make a projection based on what those kids did last year in terms of what they will do this year. I'm sorry, I don't have that right now off the top of my head, but I'll be happy to dig and find out. Our students are taking the benchmark right now, so we'll have a good idea of which students are projected.
As soon as your staff knows. That'd be great.
Okay.
Thank you, no hurry.
Will do.
Thank you.
Are we promoting this ahead of time, or are you actually waiting until the test results come in?
We will promote it, but we want to be very careful in the way we promote it, because we want students to do their very best the first time.
Right.
As I shared last week, this is only speaking to our proficiency. Growth is the first time around. So, any student, the first time they take that assessment, growth will be measured on that, and growth is a huge piece of, for individual student accountability and school and district.
Right, just in reducing test anxiety, though.
I'm sorry?
Just in reducing test anxiety for some kids.
Sure. I mean, but we will communicate it, because the turnaround will be very quick, so we will have to communicate it ahead of time. We won't know who didn't pass the test until about 10 days before this program actually begins.
Any other questions? Kate, any thoughts on the program?
I think it's a good opportunity for kids to have knowledge in it, if they don't pass the first time. I agree with Dr. Hill in not overly promoting it, because I know that growth is important, so we want kids to do their best the first time.
So, board members, I'll take a motion to approve the 2019 summer program.
Second.
Mr. Harrison made the motion, Mrs. Carpenter made the second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? And that motion passes 7-0. Thank you, Dr. Hill. And our last action agenda item this morning is to approve an architect firm for the Beverly Hills Elementary School Site Review. Board members, you had the chance to read some documentation over the past week. Mr. Schumaker, do you want to start any introduction?
Well, as noted at the last meeting, we, Ms. Carpenter and I, read through the initial eight RFPs that we received, and in that group, we narrowed it down to three prospective RFPs. That was Little Diversified, McKissick Architects, and Morrisburg Architects. And then after last week's meeting, presented most of the board members with a copy of those three RFPs. I hope you took time to read them. Ms. Carpenter and I felt like all eight of the architectural firms that we looked at were very, very competent and able to perform this study, so it wasn't that knowing we had any glaring problems, that we were judging it strictly on what the information was in the RFPs, and so we tried to present you what we felt like were the three best RFPs, as far as the way they were worded and all that. So, I hope that you've had a chance to look at them and make your own assessments. As you can see, that there were very few, in the piece of paper that I gave to you last week, that there was a very narrow margin between the three that we picked. And McKissick seemed to be the leading one, which is the one that I would recommend. I feel like they have a lot of capability. They've done a lot of different schools, and a lot of urban, suburban, but in tight areas, and they're doing some really good projects in North Carolina, but they've done projects throughout the country. So I think that that gives them a really good opportunity to show us some creativity, and they're embarked on that now. But that's my recommendation, as, from what I've read. So I'll turn it back to you, Ms. Furtinbaugh, and do you...
Mrs. Carpenter, since you were on that committee also, your thoughts?
Well, one of the things, did you get my email I sent you today? Were you able to find out that?
I opened it up at the board meeting, I'm sorry. I was working, so I didn't, I don't get to look at mail at work, so I'm so sorry.
Well, because that was one question I had, and I was...
And I didn't have the, their...
Okay, because that was one question I had, because there, again, you notice the sheets that we did put out, and they were very, very close. One of the things that, the three that we gave you, they were just very, very close. And one of the things that I was very interested in was having someone that knew our community, that have worked in our community, and this is where I personally leaned more towards Morrisburg, because they had at least 15 years of experience in our community, and they have done at least 20 years of, have done at least 20 projects in our community. Now, there's where, and that's why it's good to have two individuals on there. And over the years, and as many projects as I've been involved with, I know how important it is when we're looking at projects. I have, over the last 12 years, I've learned how important it is to know about soils, about rocks, about water. And so if an architect knows about our soil, knows about our rocks, I think that's very important. And that's why personally, I'm leaning more towards Morrisburg, because they do know that, they know our, they know our community. And Morrisburg, this McKissick, they're from Winston-Salem, they're not from our area. So that's why I'm leaning more towards Morrisburg, because they have worked in our area, they do know us, they're, and they are familiar with us. Again, it's a toss-up, any one of, and Little, they're from Charlotte, so they, and they've all worked on smaller schools, they've worked on sites that are small sites, you know, all three of them have. So it's a toss-up. But personally, I like Morrisburg, because they are local and they do know us. So, guys, it's going to be, and that's why we wanted y'all all to look at it, to look at the proposals. Personally, I'd put on the table Morrisburg. So, guys, y'all have to look at it, to look, because either one of them, because there was, as you can look at your sheet, there's not that much difference in either one of them.
Have we put this sheet out to the public?
No, this is, this is our sheet.
Okay, so we got, we had...
And, and we know how architects are. We have to choose, and then they know what that final line is. Now, once we choose, then we have to go and negotiate the price. That's the way the state says we have to do this type thing. But any three of those could go, but I personally would like to put a motion on the table at this point for Morrisburg. Let's put it up the flagpole and see what happens. But my main reason is because they are a local firm, they've worked with us before, they know about our community, and they know this, you know, know us very well.
Are we still discussing, or?
Yeah, let's still discuss.
So, there's a committee here that ranked all eight of these proposals, and you had three that came up as finalists, a Little Diversified, McKissick Architects, and Morrisburg. And according to the rubric that we have, we have Little with 55 points, Morrisburg with 56, and then McKissick with 57. So you were right, they are all very close. I mean, I've looked at the three of them, and it seems to me, just McKissick seems to be more open, getting more stakeholder involvement, and I think I appreciate more of that, is getting community input, making it transparent, so I would support the top-ranked firm that you have.
Mrs. Grimsley, your thoughts?
Well, I tend to agree with Ms. Carpenter. You know, I've had the pleasure of, in the past, working with Morrisburg, and we all had a great relationship, they did really good projects. As a contractor, I think that is very important, to have the history... As a contractor, I think that is very important, to have the history and the knowledge behind you of the community and the buildings, and, you know, just a lot of that stuff that goes with it. So I also would support Morrisburg. They all three do have really good attributes and strong points, but I definitely think, and I know that Morrisburg works with our community, because they did when we were looking at Mount Pleasant Middle School replacement. So I would support Morrisburg as well.
Go down to the other end, Ms. Furtinbaugh.
Clearly, this is not my area of expertise, so I'm going to trust some of my fellow colleagues and say that Morrisburg would be who I would go with, because they are local.
Mr. Harrison?
So my understanding last week was that there was consensus in the two-person committee for the scoring and the recommendation that we have here, so I am trying to ask what's changed in that period of time.
Well, you see the numbers, excuse me. You see the chart. We said it was, for those three, it was a consensus. We're off by just a point, but I mean, they're within a point of each other. And that's why we gave the things for y'all to look at, too. But we work consensus with the three that we picked.
Yeah, Ms. Carpenter, Ms. Carpenter is absolutely correct. It's just a statistical dead heat, because you're really using subjective, you know, we tried to be as objective as we could, and you can see the criteria at the bottom, how we tried to do that. But even with that, there's still a lot of subjectivity in this. So, to say that one is one point better than the other, all depends on how, you know, I had one less point for Morrisburg than Ms. Carpenter had for McKissick, and so that swung it towards McKissick, and that's, if you look at it that way. But, you know, all three, all eight, were capable of doing the work, so we were really trying to just glean from the pros that we received, what the, this pros tended to be the best pros, really.
We did agree on the three that we brought forward. We did agree. That's, and so we are not out of agreement with that.
No.
And that's why we gave it to our board for them to look at.
Absolutely.
And we did agree. Did we not agree, Barry?
I'm agreeing with you. I just come to your defense.
We are agreeing.
I tried to answer Mr. Harrison's question, so that he would understand that it really is, it is what the board wants, and that's it, so.
And that's why we gave it to them.
Yeah. So, Mr. Harrison, any thoughts?
No.
Okay. I'll say, I will share my thoughts, and Ms. Grimsley knows we served on a construction committee previously, that when Morrisburg built Cox Mill High School, I would love to have them do any additional work for us. I'm gonna give you one caveat, though, that I'm concerned about. Mr. Berg lives in the downtown Concord area, and I'm a little bit concerned that he is going to be, if they do a true evaluation, and he has to put some caveats, or his firm has to put caveats on that site, I don't want to put him in a situation of it can't meet the goals. So I'm worried about basically putting he and his firm in an awkward position, because this is not to build a school yet, this is just to say, is it, will it work? And we don't know what we're going to find through this process. So, I do like, like I said, we've had very good experiences working with that firm before. The other thing that it will be important for the community to know is that all communication with, from the architects and scheduling will go through Mr. Schumaker and Mrs. Carpenter, not through, this will not be private meetings scheduled with the architect. They're on our dime. We're contracting with them. And so we'll certainly open to community meetings, but it's not sidebars if one of the folks has his phone number. It's, you can't discuss the board's project outside the board, basically. So, and I think that'll be handled through the contract and the guidelines and whatnot. So, anyway, so are we ready to vote on Ms., or actually not vote yet, but get a second for Ms. Carpenter's nomination?
I'll second.
Okay. Ms. Carpenter made the motion. Ms. Grimsley made the second. All in favor of the selection of MBJ, Morrisburg Architects, for the Beverly Hills Site Review, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so how many do we have? Holly? Okay, so one, two, I'm gonna vote for MBJ, three, four, five, you gonna, six? Mr. Schumaker? You wanna go along? Okay, so we'll make that unanimous with a seven oh, and the selection of Morrisburg, and Mr. Schumaker will remain the primary contact, and he'll, you can proceed with contacting our construction attorneys.
So at this point, I will proceed with contacting MBJ, Morrisburg, and, but I will not send any letters out to the other firms until we have a contract with, with that firm, so.
An agreement.
You know, full disclosure. So, that's the way it'll work. And Ms. Carpenter and I will work with, with our attorney on that process.
So, and we'll go to Hartzell White for the construction?
Mm-hmm.
For that contract? Okay.
So you're gonna, so you'll contact them, then? You're gonna contact?
I'll, I'll get with Tim, and we'll get setting up with Andrew and company, and we'll go from there, so we can get the AIA contract firmed up, and then, and we know what our not-to-exceed is.
Okay. Any other business this evening, board members? I'll take a motion to convene in closed session, to consult with an attorney and preserve the attorney-client privilege pursuant to General Statute 143, 318, 11A3, and to consider confidential personnel matters pursuant to General Statute 143, 318, 11A6. Ms. Grimsley made the motion. Mr. Harrison? Mr. Harrison made the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Say, we'll say thank you and good evening, and the board will now convene in closed session.